Of course, it's hard.
Of course, it's difficult.
All right. Um, this is good. Forgot to open things. And then it's Kate?
She's going to be on today.
Oh. I thought you were trying to connect somebody.
I was.
And any public comments? Let me just get myself situated here. All right. My name is Ananda. This is the Instructional Work Group and I'm calling this meeting to order at 5:01. No public comments tonight. So we're moving into the first item in our agenda is the update regarding the superintendent search.
Yeah. So just a quick update. The BWP consultants were here last week. They did numerous focus groups and it was a success. I talked to them this weekend. We've talked to a lot of people. They got a lot of really good feedback. Surveys are coming in too. People are filling out that survey. And so they will be coming to report back to the board on the 11th, next Monday. We, they're going to try to have the report done before the meeting so that we can take a look at it. But if they do have it done, it's going to be really close to the meeting. But we'll have time to talk about it on the 11th. They'll do a presentation for us, go through it, and then we can answer any questions if anything comes up during our discussion on the 11th or even afterwards, they can include that in the report as well.
And the survey is open until?
I think the survey is, I'm not sure if it's still open, is it?
Yes, it is. Two minutes.
Oh, two minutes. Yeah.
And Chris, you, I don't know if you want to share with the board your perspective. I could not attend any of the forums, but for anybody who wants to, feel free to report out if you were able to attend.
Yeah, I was able to attend the La Follette listening session. It was fantastic and I probably will keep my comments back until we have the full discussion about it on the 11th.
Sure.
It was really valuable. They did a great job.
Great. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Laura. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from April 1st Instructional Work Group.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And you have minutes approved and we're ready to start the presentation. So thank you very much Lisa and Lisa's team. I will say that we, Lisa prepared the presentation to have as much external information as possible. So there's links into that. We'll hold them to some questions until they pause and then we'll kind of facilitate the questions in that way.
All right. Thanks, Ananda. So tonight we're going to talk a little bit about the Human Growth and Development curriculum and the work that we're doing around the proactive strategies in the curriculum and the planning. We have Patty Schaefer with us tonight, who's our Director of STEM in the Curriculum and Instruction Department. And then next to me is Ashley Riley, our Physical Education, Health, and Wellness Coordinator. So thanks to both of these folks for joining us tonight. So we're going to give you a bit of an overview before we start of how we're going to sort of design a scope and sequence about this over the next five months. Ananda and I talked about this a little bit early and we wanted to be sure we kept the instructional work groups manageable, but also responded to the. So tonight you'll hear about the curriculum around human growth and development and the proactive work, as I said. Then during the Instructional Work Group on February 3rd, Jay Affeld is going to come and present a mid-year update on the BEP implementation and he'll share a little bit more about the reactive strategies that we're implementing or developing. And then finally, during the Instructional Work Group on March 2nd, we'll do a little bit deeper dive into policies and practices related to bullying, Title IX, and then sexual assault response. So there's two more meetings after this. Just keep the session prepared for you in the next five months. So with that, I will turn it over to Ashley and Patty and we'll get started.
All right. Hello, everyone. So today, we are here to provide an update of the current status of human growth and development in MMSD and then also outline next steps for continued support with implementation of instruction. First, we're going to start with just providing an overview of the policy and requirements for human growth and development. Then we will move to a description of the previous Human Growth and Development Advisory Council work and then update some recommendations from the committee and then show progress to date and next steps that we have for instruction.
So just to start and get some context into kind of the work that we're doing here in MMSD really follows from state statutes. And one statute in particular really highlights the expectations from the state level around instruction. And this goes above and beyond what we would see in other content areas overall. So we kind of pulled some of the language from the statute here, but if you want to read the full language, that's why we provided the link on this slide. But overall, statute 118-019 really gives us some things to think about in terms of what we actually, school boards around guiding the work at the school district level regarding the human growth and development instruction in grades K through 12, lights the need for the instruction to be medically accurate and thinking about the information that's provided, making sure that it's age-appropriate for students. So we're really thinking about a wide range of some of the skills that we want to highlight through our human growth and development ships and the connection to the resources related specifically to survivors of sexual abuse and assault overall. And that last part, again, pulling some of the language and really thinking about ensuring that our approach to instruction in the classroom and the materials that we're using aren't discriminatory for any of our students in the classrooms.
All right. So just to capture some key bullet points around what human growth and development learning looks like in MMSD, the three bullets inclusive for all students and this comes in several different ways, but you see the first, actually, three bullet points look at supporting students who are transgender, non-binary, or gender expansive, as well as LGBTQ plus student. I think two years ago, Pat created the guidance for policies to support students. And then also, we have a separate best practices document for specifically human growth and development that goes out to health teachers around like things such as when we talk about families, that we're talking about all different sorts of families, not just one specific type, and in different relationships, as well as just body parts in a sense of being inclusive. We also have connecting to the elementary level, having lessons that include a lot of human growth and development skills and concepts, but also through that lens of inclusive for all students. And then lastly, the fourth sub-bullet point is that we are encouraging health education teachers to continue to collaborate with cross-categorical special ed teachers, as well as BRTs, bilingual resource teachers, and ESL in order to make sure that our curriculum is accessible for all students. The second bullet point is just making sure that we are focusing on skills-based instruction. This is moving to a concept where information alone is not enough to change behavior. So the thought is, is that we need to not only talk about functional health knowledge, but through the sense of practicing skills that lead to better health literacy for students. And then the last one is just to continue to look at developing partnerships in the community around supporting consent culture through different community organizations.
So Ashley highlighted in those points, ways in which that first statute that we highlighted are being enacted and how we're responding to that here. Another statute that is important to the work that we've done around human growth and development over the last few years is in regards to the expectation that a school district actually work with an appointed committee in looking at human growth and development curriculum and instruction in our school district. And so with that in mind, Ashley, most of what we're looking at is what's come about in somewhat recent times through developing a committee here in MMSD.
So in the spring of 2018, the board approved the committee. So as Patty was saying, that the members of this committee, there's a very specific formula as far as what DPI calls out, as far as who needs to be on the committee, how much, how much representation of different areas such as staff, community members, clergy, families, students, things like that. We met three times and that was May, two meetings in May and then June of 2018. And the outcomes for those three sessions were we developed a human growth and development position statement for the district, just kind of laying out this is what we believe, human growth and development curriculum recommendations, and then some priority actions that we're going to take a look at in a second for implementation and strengthening human growth and development in MMSD.
Is the committee?
It was, it was three meetings and we, in one of our next steps, we do talk about bringing the committee back up, but it hasn't met since then. All right. And if you would, this slide, I not necessarily read word for word, but this is our position statement, so I will read the vision. Through our human growth and development program, all students are empowered to reach their full potential as healthy and safe individuals. And then we have the mission statement there to just talking about that we need to provide knowledge, skills, and resources for students to achieve that vision and in partnership with families and community. And I had mentioned before that there were six priority areas or focus actions that the committee had called out when we were looking at our needs and our hopes for where we want to be as a district and curriculum to make sure that it is medically accurate, aligning with what Patty shared earlier, age-appropriate, inclusive, non-stigmatizing, and skills-based. The second point was to make sure, which is linked to the first, is just making sure that it's inclusive for all students, especially what we heard from the students, that it needed to include students of all identities and not that it was just focused on certain individuals. Third bullet point, looking at quality professional development for teachers, nurses, and administrators that involve, or that involves students as well. So just that ongoing fourth bullet, ensuring access to human growth and development instructions. So that could be looking at structures and where health education is being instructed and just what that looks like. Fifth one, provide access, excuse me, provide students with access to school and community resources around sexual healthcare. And then, and then the sixth bullet, develop communication tools for families, not only for themselves, knowing about the curriculum, but then also like, we need help on this topic, how do I talk to my student about that? This first slide looks at specifically the curriculum and the professional learning for teachers. So we, some of this, we mentioned about the moving from content-based to skills-based opportunities in the classroom so that students are practicing the skills necessary, not just talking about what certain things are or mean, but actually practicing skills such as interpersonal communication or decision-making, goal-setting, things like that. We have developed a 4K through 12 sequential learning progression that outlines per grade level, what are the main learning outcomes, and those are all based on standards, the health education standards, the national sexuality standards, sexual health standards, as well as some other resources that we brought in. We have, I mentioned before, created the guidance for inclusive human growth and development in partnership with students, then partnering with the Rape Crisis Center and days as guest speakers in classes and for PD for teachers. Next steps, definitely wanting to continue to dive deeper into consent culture. We had a PD for secondary teachers this school year during Welcome Back, bless you. And then inclusive human growth and development and sexual abuse as well. We also want to focus on, on this continued support to health education teachers, not just those touchpoints with PD, but how are we supporting teachers along the way? And then establish a system for monitoring progress for implementation with these learning outcomes. So then these actions and next steps have to do with the structures in supporting human growth and development. So I mentioned before, we established the vision at different districts. We noticed that that was something that a lot of districts have, it's just kind of like a we believe or this is what the main purpose is. Making sure that we have resources for health education for all grade levels, 4K through high school. And we started to work a lot more closely with student services in the last couple of years to really look at how is school nurses, social workers, school psychologists, and health teachers all kind of working together to better that instruction for students. Next steps, continue that collaboration. We have also talked about reconvening the Human Growth and Development Advisory Council where we can kind of look at next steps as far as curriculum resources and then scheduling support across schools, specifically in the middle schools. And then increasing student voice in strengthening health education resources and supports. And the last priority, or kind of clumped together, but the family connections. So so far, we have updated the, sorry, we included student and family voice in the human, and updated the language in the district policy guides for families that talk about human growth and development so that they align with our, the learning outcomes, so they're updated. And then next, we talked about having not only resources available for parents around the curriculum and have that consistent across schools, but then also websites for other resources that families may want to access.
So just to close of what we have for you, if you're looking for some more information to better, like see where some of this comes from and address potentially some questions, the DPI website has some great FAQs there that we think are very informational around sort of state guidelines and expectations around human growth and development. And then Ashley also shared here the specific position statement, right? So we referenced it on our earlier slide, progression that came out from the committee's work when they had convened, I guess, a little over a year ago now.
So thank you, Lisa, Ashley, and Patty. I hope, I appreciate the framing, that, you know, talking about what is compliance and having the links there so people see what is required of us. And then how the implementation, like what is a day-to-day implementation happens. And today, what we're talking about is those proactive next step structures. There's more that we're going to scaffold that presentation in the next few instructions, but if we can have conversation about what we have presented today, it'll be really helpful. Nikki, you had?
I asked one question.
Anybody else has a question? Yeah, Ali?
Yeah, so I think there are components of what you're talking about that are inconsistent with our practices, right? So our dress code doesn't align with some of the values you're speaking to. So if we're talking about consent, if we're talking about kind of equal access, a space that is inclusive of folks who have extensive relationships with their gender, we have a series of practices that actually undermine that and I think we need to examine that pretty closely. I am curious about practices, particularly in early childhood, around learning about puberty. I am also curious about the word age-appropriate versus developmentally appropriate. And so I think age-appropriate is a strange generalization I'd like us to get away from within education and actually talk about what's developmentally appropriate because that allows for us to interact with the individual, right? So one six-year-old can be in a very different place than another six-year-old in terms of what's developmentally appropriate as far as exposure. And that being said, I think age-appropriate also kind of leans towards certain conservative value stats, right? Which is that these parts of the body are not things that kids need to be able to dismount because they're not old enough, right? Except they have a body and they use it and they should be able to reference it and also be able to talk confidently about the way other people come into contact with their bodies or navigate their bodies. And so how are we empowered? Curious because I'm like, we're listening to kind of this full-scale, like K through 12 approach and you go to school here. And so I'm like, how has your, how has your experience been shaped by these ideas in terms of human growth and development and sex ed?
Yeah, so I actually had a few notes about.
Nika, can you turn on your mic?
Sorry, I need to. So I was just like wondering about like online health and just like how you guys are planning on like making sure that you're talking about like what, making sure like that people who are in online health like don't have the experience of like actually getting to interact with a member from an RCC institution or something like that. So like how are you guys planning on like making sure that people are really learning about consent when they're participating? And then also like about education, about like knowing who your Title IX officers are in schools, because that's really an issue I see at like around the district and at Memorial because like we don't really learn about like the process of reporting a sexual assault in health classes, which I hope is something that like you guys might address in the future.
Can I ask, are you all still segregating students based on gender in fourth grade and fifth grade to talk about puberty?
No. Our practice is that they're not separated between gender because of when you have a student that's non-binary, where do someone go, where does that student go?
There were some questions before. I don't know if you all had like some reactions to Ali and then some reactions to Anika.
One I want to directly address, the question around age-appropriate versus developmentally appropriate, I really appreciate that we were using the term because it comes directly from the state statutes, but I think it's certainly something that we can not only adjust, but then really think about the impact of how does using different language adjust, but then really think about the impact of how does using different language imply, right, different actions? Because I think that's, like, it's a both, right? Not only using a different term, but actually that then informing your practice. So I think that's something we really want to think about, and certainly an opportunity, as Nikki had asked earlier, about whether or not that committee had still remained active in reconvening and really addressing that too with that upcoming committee. I think I'll let Ashley speak a little bit too. We actually did highlight some upcoming work of looking at the online health course that Anika asks about. For those of you who might not be familiar, our high schools in particular is where online health becomes more accessible, or a way of kind of completing some health requirements for students, not because it's the only time, but that's most prevalent. So students in completing the half-credit required for graduation may choose to do it in an online setting. And I'll let Ashley speak a little bit to what we, what we're working on with that.
Yep. So current ways that students can achieve online health for their credit is through MBC, which is a, a curriculum that's not necess, it's closely aligned, but not, it's a, it's an online option that's available to some students. We are trying to expand that to create our own. We have a team that's together right now of three teachers. We meet in two weeks, where we're bringing together to create our own online curriculum that's directly aligned with the health education in the class. Actually heard from Memorial students in the Teal Ruben Club was that their online experience didn't match some of these things, and that we wanted to make sure that we weren't sending even completely different messaging. Because I think some students can print online class than MBC and then get their transcripts transferred in. So the idea was is how can we provide opportunities for students that do want to take online health, but that it aligns to our, the curriculum and is skills-based instead of knowledge-based or content-based. Yeah, so that's to come this year. And the goal is, is that next year will be the first time that we offer where students are taking the class with our own health teachers teaching it, but in an online format. And to address the second piece, we had a Welcome Back Professional Development for secondary health teachers, and that was part of the PD around the, making sure that our students know who the Title IX liaison is, and just the process of what that looks like. And that was kind of the process, but is to clarify that. And Student Services is doing a lot of that work with legal as well. But that was one of our points, is that we need to make sure that health education is not just talking about the skills and the knowledge and information, but also connecting to the resources in the, in the school, and then also in the community.
So when you guys are like, going back to like the slide earlier in the presentation, when you're talking about like providing resources to like students and schools in regards to like sexual and reproductive health, does that mean like providing free contraception at all schools and providing like free menstrual products at like all schools, including middle schools? Or like, what do you guys mean by that?
What the slide was, is, I gotta, is it, you said that was one of the six bullets, I think, in the six key points. What that was intended was, is that we, in our health education curriculum, are connecting students with resources in the community. So if a student is wanting to know about testing, or they want to go find contraception, that we are helping bridge that gap, or helping raise awareness. There's another take to that, but I think that's beyond like with-
So I think, overall, what you were-
Right. Connecting to the resources is really thinking about making sure that students know where to access either, whether it be information or, right, like physical kinds of resources and support that they would need. It goes a bit beyond the scope of looking at it from a curriculum and instruction standpoint. That's what we're speaking to in that overall.
Yeah.
So, can you say it again, your suggestion?
Like, is it possible for like going forward in the future for the district to like provide free contraception and menstrual products to all students, just so that like people can overcome accessibility barriers, like when they're trying to add access to those resources?
So I don't know if that's something-
Yeah, I'm thinking-
You can look this side of the room.
Yeah. Yeah. What I, we do it was. I mean, I can, that's what I was gonna share, that a lot of those things I think are done in a different, I mean, when I think of the menstrual products, I know that we receive, I think, I don't know if it was donations or something, were free menstrual products. And then I would, I would have to get more information on it and get back to, but as far as the school nurses go, as far as getting those products out to students. So maybe we need some suggestions on how to make sure that students are aware of those.
So in the health classes, you guys like talk about that, or like make it explicit that like you have to go to your nurse if you want this?
I can't-
Does that happen in your health class? Like, have you taken help?
It hasn't happened. I haven't yet, but in my friend's experience, it hasn't happened.
Wait, you haven't taken help?
No, they didn't make me.
Yeah, and I, like I said, I'd have to find out-
Thank you.
From some student services staff to see like how that actually, as far as disseminating those products and stuff. But as far as contraception, I know there's the pilot of providing contraceptive counseling and handing out condoms.
Good question. Anika, thank you. Hold on one second, Nikki.
Sure.
What, something that, that Anika mentioned made me think about, how do we, so, you know, one of the things, and I think that you all have heard me say like around my frame, I think there's the, the things that are, we're mandated to do, there's the plan, and there's the implementation. And then the implementation is where, in a practice, is where I, I do much stronger about having in the context of your experience, what's happening, what can be better, right? And, and, oh no, I have a teenager who is actually a health advocate for teens. So she has had experience with teachers giving inaccurate information around just health and around particular women's bodies. Can you share a little bit, like, when, when Anika or her friends, or my daughter and her friends, like they're experiencing something, it's like, hmm, this does not feel right. What, like what ways and which ways that they can advocate? Who would they go to to say like, I heard this in my class, or this is, this is going on? What are the, sort of the, the places where students can have their voices heard? That is, that is less like, let's go to the principal kind of situation?
So I think a couple of things come to mind. First and foremost, I think it's actually important, particularly at the, right, because I think we're speaking at the high school level. There, I think, maybe not in the whole classroom setting, because that can be confrontational, right? And it can escalate, and that's not the direction you want to go. But to me, it's important for the teacher, right? Because first and foremost, we want the teacher to be better informed and do better practice. And so I think there are ways that students can bring it up with a teacher. That doesn't always go, right, in the direction that students seek.
It's hard to bring up something to someone that has a power over your grade.
I agree. So that isn't, and I think it depends, like what is the like extent of what we're talking about, right? We're kind of talking in a general sense. That would be my first, like, what I would encourage a student to do. If that doesn't feel like the right next direction, I mean, but the principal's the one who's, right, working with the teacher to ensure that they're meeting students' needs. So a principal, I think, needs to also be in a conversation that might be otherwise, like who is someone you trust in the school, right? So we have school nurses and other, like even office, who might be a first adult to talk with, that the student has a relationship with. Because first and foremost, like making sure that the school, right, is aware of that question or concern, and, right, inaccurate lessons being provided in that classroom, because it's impacting more than an individual student than it's on that scale. I think our office, right, so I believe Ashley is always open to like then working with students and thinking with students. So I think there's a number of adults at the school who would, but we would also then work with around that. But first and foremost, right, we also want schools to be aware and work to help everybody. And often, they would also, right, call on us to support. So then, again, right, like it's a matter of the individual student and what concerns they have, and who is an adult in the school that they can kind of work with as a first step.
Thank you, Penn. Were you gonna add something to this?
I was just gonna say, now that we have a policy committee, why can't we, can we possibly discuss requiring menstrual products at every middle, at high school, and possibly with our community partners? I know Boys and Girls Club has reached out several times on tampon sanitary napkin drives, stating that the schools are, they would be willing to donate. And frankly, I don't see why we can't just put them in the bathroom.
Yeah. So Savian, Chris, and Ali.
Can they, those two go before me?
Yes.
Turn your-
Holly, were you talking about menstrual products specifically?
No, I was not.
Okay.
I was gonna speak to menstrual, thank you.
Okay. I had a few comments. First, I just want to put out there a lot of appreciation that MMSD is teaching comprehensive sex ed in our schools. If you read the state statute, it's very focused on abstinence-based sex ed. And it also looks like any human growth and development is totally optional. A school board may provide an instructional program in human growth and development. So the fact that we're doing this and that we're doing it comprehensively is great. And I just want to let you know how much I appreciate that. I wanted to bring up the family partnership idea. I feel like families could be more involved in human growth. I know many schools and PTOs at back-to-school night or at PTO meetings will have like math night, because how we're teaching math now is really different from how parents learn math. And the idea is that like we get parents up to speed about how we're teaching multiplication tables, and then they can teach their, help their kids the right way at home. Why aren't we doing that for human growth and development? How I learned human growth and development is really different from what we're teaching right now. And I think parents would be overjoyed if at back-to-school nights or at PTO meetings, we sat down and said, here's how we're teaching consent, here's how we're defining consent, because, you know, nobody in my generation got consent-based sex ed.
Zero.
So I think that would be enormously helpful in terms of trying to address rape culture in the district. Like, let's get the whole family involved, let's get the whole community involved. I've read through the-
Chris, you want, I think you might, Ashley has some?
Oh, okay, sure.
Yeah, I just would add that when we brought the Human Growth and Development Committee together, that was something, like in that, that one bullet around the family connections that was brought up too, is like maybe having some district-level professional learning spaces for, for families to be able to come in to learn more about, kind of like, an example, like there's the vaping one right now, where parents can go learn more about vaping. And so not, obviously, a different topic, but just some places, district-wide, or maybe by attendance area, where parents could come learn more, or families.
I would really advocate for doing it school by school.
Okay.
Because it's just easier for parents to get there. If you do it at back-to-school night, you've got an audience, and I would have totally gone to a session on that.
Yeah.
Back-to-school night. I printed out and read the topics and learning outcomes for K, you know, 4K or, yeah, 4K through 12th grade. And I did notice, reading them, that there's a fair amount of mention of consent at the elementary level, and then it disappears at the middle and high school level. And yet, in your presentation, you talked about trying to get more consent-based education into the curriculum. So I just wanted to know how the district is defining consent, and how we're working that into the health curriculum, especially at the middle and high school levels.
So the middle school learning progression and the high school learning progressions were developed a couple of years ago. One of the next steps, bringing that committee back, is to look at that specifically. Because last year, working with student services, we really tried to strengthen that with the 4K 5, because of resources that were being shared with schools. So that is definitely on the radar as far as needing to strengthen the language. Because although all of the secondary health teachers got, or had some professional learning around consent culture, it's, it, I, I agree with you of what you see in there. It needs to be, but we need to make sure that we have the right people at the table to continue strengthening those learning outcomes.
You know, building on that, one of the things I noticed in the, the learning outcomes is that the communication skills are very focused on refusal skills. And consent is not about refusal skills. Consent is actually about asking for permission, not saying no.
I would get away from the word permission.
Yeah.
It was, oh.
Too. I would say consent is about share.
Thanks, that's much better.
Right, because otherwise, it's like girls give boys permission.
Oh, I didn't think of that. Good point.
Yeah, you gotta get away from the gender stuff. I wonder, I'm curious how many students or families opt their students out of human growth and development, and why? Like, is there a rough percentage, or is it very, very few, or?
I wouldn't be able to give you like that. I know the exact answer. I can share my experience, some teachers. My six years teaching high school health, I had two parents opt out. That was in a different district. So just, I'm just sharing kind of like a guide. And then there's, it's, it's few. I would have to say like six, maybe, estimate, like it's hard to tell, like per, per teacher, or I don't, that's the bad estimate too, it's not six. But it's a very small amount. I just, I would have to ask the school teachers, the classroom teachers for more.
What is your concern that you're trying to? The concern I'm trying to address is that, you know, obviously by state statute, every family has the right to be informed of the human growth and development curriculum and opt their kids out. But I'm also seeing that, you know, and we also inform our parents about welcoming schools, and it seemed like there's a lot of overlap between the two. And some of the skills we're teaching in there, which is just about acceptance and preventing bullying, and good communication skills that may have nothing to do with sex education. Opt their kids out of that. Do we make sure that kids who do opt out of human growth and development still get those just essential communication and life skills that are about tolerance and inclusion, and not necessarily about sex and sexuality?
One of the recommendations that would be to teachers, if they have a student that opts out, or they write a letter to either the teacher or the principal, is to contact that family to find out, like what specifically are they looking to opt out of? Because for that reason exactly, is that a lot of this stuff, a lot of the lessons are, are, could be for 4K through 5 welcoming schools lessons, or talking about people with different identities or families and friendships. And, and so it may not be that, they just may think human growth and development and think, my first grader can't learn human growth, you know, like the, they may just be thinking a certain thing. So the, encouraging the communication to first say like, well, here, here's our learning outcomes. Is there something specific that you would like your child to be opt out of? So that way, it's not like we're pulling everything.
I think so.
For like one or two lessons.
I just want to add to that. So John and I-
Can you come to the microphone, please?
John and I run the welcoming schools program.
But I just wanted to speak to the fact that welcoming schools doesn't just live within the human growth and development. It is also incorporated into a lot of different academic areas. It's incorporated into the cells, learning and all of that. So yes, this is one area that we're incorporating it, but it's not the only. So if a family were to choose to opt out of human growth and development, they are still getting welcoming schools lessons in other areas as well, if that, if the school has kind of embraced that, and that's something that they're doing.
Great. That's really helpful. Thanks. And then I just had one more point, which was to echo what Anika said about online health. I know that one option, at least for online health, is you take it through another school district. And one of my kids did that. And I don't think there was any human growth and development in the online class, because you don't have to. So I, I appreciate that we're going to be doing our own curriculum. And more importantly, for kids who have done or do online health through another district, are there ways to incorporate this information into other classes so they don't miss it?
Those are great suggestions.
I think they know what I-
Yeah, so I want to stress that there are areas in which I think you all are really pushing us forward. There are only 13 states in the United States that require sex ed to be medically accurate. Wisconsin is not one of them. And so anytime medically accurate came up, that's your leadership, and I greatly appreciate it. The other thing I want to say is I really appreciate your work and the work of Cherie, in terms of making sure LGBTQ students are, you know, thought of and given an environment in which they're accepted and they can see themselves as people with families, because it's really important. And the impact of feeling discriminated against at school is devastating. And so you all are working really hard, and I recognize that and appreciate it greatly. I think it's complicated to refer to our state statute, given, you know, that Wanniki has abstinence-only sex ed. And I think that what we probably want to do is look towards best practices. And I think that's a lot of what you all have done. But I think there are areas to strengthen in terms of best practices. And so I don't think we think of anatomy, right, as, as human growth and development. That's a science class. And so to a certain extent, some of this is science. We don't let people opt in and out of science for the most part. And so I think having that lens of this is about accurate information, and to a certain extent, desexualizing human growth and development.
Wait a second, Ali. I think somebody inadvertently closed our door.
But desexualizing human growth and development and making human growth and development science-based is also beneficial to the LGBTQ community, which is hyper-sexualized and constantly associated with sex and sexuality versus, you know, humanity and an expansive relationship with one's body and ability to navigate one's body. The other things I think are specific to human growth and development are just things like, why do you learn to drive at the age of 15 or 16? Well, it's because your hand-eye coordination peaks at that point in your life, right? And so being able to tie this to, to a variety- And so being able to tie this to, to a variety of understanding of the way the human body works is, is relevant to our ability to do this well. I think as far as consent culture goes or consent-based education, I think you all are kind of in the infancy, infancy of that work. And I think we as a nation are in the infancy of that conversation. And so I wanna, I guess, let you all know, because I know the people I'm sitting up here with, that we, we would support you wholeheartedly in anything you want to do to make sure kids understand how to navigate informed consent and understand, you know, their rights to their bodies. And so please be ambitious and bold and, and look to best practices. And please look to states that have far better standards than ours. Because I talk about the LGBTQ community across the state. And we have a long way to go in comparison to places all over the world. Chris, I think your suggestion was one of the most wholesome and I could, could think of in terms of wanting parental involvement. I think there is a need to be cautious in terms of involving parents. Because I think there are some parents who are really excited and really wanna know. And there are some parents who would be interested in policing the gender, not only of their student, but of other students, or policing sexuality, not only of their students, but of other students. And so I think that in building trust with students, we, we need to do things in as mindful a way as possible. And I think you all are doing a, a great job of that. I think creating something that parents or family members or community members can opt in to is great. But I think best practice is, is not outing students, is not, you know, yeah, is, is making your school a safe place for the, the student to learn. And that is our, our real responsibility. Our real responsibility is not making sure the teacher gets to where they need to be or the parent gets to where they need to be. Making sure like our, our young people have the ability to, to navigate their own dignity and respect for others in order to create safe schools and, and well-informed young people. And so I think, you know, I think you all are doing a really great job of prioritizing and moving forward. And I hope you feel supported by the board and know that we appreciate your work.
Thank you, Ali, and Savia and Anika.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I've heard multiple stories from students and parents about a particular, you know, student's human growth and development interfering with their own academic performance elsewhere. And so to what extent does our, like, professional development of staff help staff respond to that in a developmentally and effective and empathetic manner? To Ali's point, to what extent can we embed human growth and development content into other courses? To like science courses or social studies or English, to make that content more interactive and, and relevant to a student's life? And then to, and can we, you know, make sure that we are amplifying that there are student support services in, in classrooms for students as well? Those are the points and questions.
Any thoughts?
I'm trying to think of your... I'm trying to think, so I wrote down, there was a couple, there's a lot of different points, there's some kinda like, yeah, there was one.
Maybe I'll start with a quick thought and then you can add.
Great.
I think some of our work, right, that we highlighted here is a little bit new and emerging in terms of shifting practice, particularly around health education in K-5, well, 4K-5, around, right, like, the updates to the learning progression, right? So just working to ensure that there are resources and supports for teachers there. And we know, and over the last few years, that each of our elementary schools has really some ways of approaching the human growth and development component and really health education broadly at their school that works best for the staff and the collaborations, whether it be with a school nurse, working with the teachers, to plan for their lessons and/or also sometimes coming in and helping to deliver those lessons. So in many cases though, what we'll find, particularly at the elementary level, is there is a lot of already incorporating some of the learning in with other content areas. And we actually actively are promoting not only from the lens of health education, but across all content areas. Because we know that learning really isn't a sort of isolated experience for students, that I'm learning to read by think room and some of those science lessons might naturally connect to some of the things that I, right, and for me, learning around health education and understanding either my own body or my family or other aspects of that. It starts to become a little bit more complex as we enter into the secondary setting where we have sort of departmentalizations of teaching responsibilities overall. And some of the work I think that's happening, and I'll highlight now, actually at the high school level, is for some students, if you're in the health services pathway, that's now in its third year at the place, where teachers are collaborating and actually we have two of our health educators from two of those high schools working in support of their 10th grade pathways team. And that's where their health education course is. And they're looking at ways to better build. I can also though speak to, and Ashley could barely echo, part of what we have seen also happen though, even outside of the 10th grade and the 9th and 11th grades with that particular pathway. And again, largely because of the theme of the pathway, already some of the ideas that were emerging with the 9th grade team as they were beginning, right, so a couple of years ago when they were first preparing to implement, they were looking at some of the things that they didn't identify originally as health education components that we were working on. And so we were making sure that that was in alignment and supporting of a full learning progression at the high school level. It's becoming a bit complex, right, to kind of work across those multiple teacher groups at that school. Now, that's also only a portion of the students in our high schools. Right, that that isn't going to likely happen in such a natural way in other pathway themes as easily. And so figuring out how, how might we kind of look at that? The idea of like, where does that, how does that look in like an anatomy and physiology course? But that course is an elective at usually a junior or senior level for students. So how do we really work with that and not have duplicative learning for students? Because we don't want there to be redundancies, but actually complementary learning. And I think those ideas are still largely emerging. I can speak also to some of our new science curriculum that we're working on in the middle school setting. Are, I think, opening up more of those opportunities. So I really appreciate you kind of pushing, thinking in that way of how do we work to support educators in their thinking across the lines, right, blurring the lines essentially in the content learning in ways that'll help students make more sense of, right, each of the components of it. And something we can look at particularly as we're making further updates in improvements for 612. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I love that there's more you want to add.
And I'd just add the other groups and areas that this intersects is also, some schools, especially in the middle school, have used advisory as a place for some of this work as well as when we talk about social-emotional learning and the ACP curriculum at the middle school level, there's a lot of blending where goal-setting is one of the health education standards. And also with ACP and CELLS. So it's, there's a lot of connections. And we have started to bring more of those different kind of areas of work together. Like this, it's not just health or it's not ju, but it's this overall well-rounded education.
I appreciate everything and all your hard work. My question is for those students who are non-verbal, how do we teach consent? It's called heart consulting, focuses on curriculum for individuals who are non-verbal. I could get you that information to try and work on curriculum. Because oftentimes individuals who are non-verbal are left out of this discussion. But just because they can't speak doesn't mean they shouldn't know it and they're directly affected by it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Awesome, that'd be great.
I did wanna comment just on the menstrual products conversation, because we emphasized high school and middle schools. And I do think that we can be pretty honest and just admit that the majority of our workforce is adult folks who identify as femme or women. And that exposing children to menstrual products is like a normal part of life throughout their entire childhood is okay. And also allows for us not just to support our students, but a, a very large number of, of our staff, including, I'm like, I think, we as, as board members, like, how often we break, given our, our composition and the different ways that we interact with our own bodies, right? And so I think that, yeah, I think throughout, throughout our schools, we can, we can take the initiative to make sure people have access to that level of support and that students, and also students go through puberty at all kinds of ages, right? And so I think in, in elementary school, it can, it can be particularly supportive and compassionate to normalize menstruation if you're the first kid to get your period, right? And so I would, I would encourage us to, to get away from some of the stigma that has informed the idea of age appropriateness throughout our history.
So there was one topic that got brought up and I'm not sure, and maybe there wasn't a response, was regarding to dress code. And that's something that we did hear quite a bit from, like, in emails and from students' testimonials. I find it extremely appalling that we're like, it's still in that space. Training, like, staff using that policy at their own discretion and what they feel is appropriate and what's not. And find that extremely disturbing that a man is deciding how that's gonna work out for this young person. So any of you have any, like, how, how is that navigating, how is that being navigated or any thoughts on that?
And are you speaking specifically to the dress code policy that is written around PE?
Mm-hmm.
Dress code?
Jay can talk a little bit about that.
All right. Thanks, Jay. I think it's broader than that.
Yes.
That the board have a dress code, but it doesn't say what. So our dress code could be as simple as whether it's appropriate, right? But that lets open to interpretation. Thank you so much for bringing us back to that.
Yeah.
Hey, everyone, I'm Jay Affeld, I oversee the Department of... I think most of you are aware that last year, throughout the year, we were in a process of gathering lots and lots of stakeholder input around revising the Behavior Education Plan that also included input on the dress code, which is a part of the Behavior Education Plan. And so we believe that we did make significant improvements to what had, I think, been a pretty static dress code that was quite outdated with a lot of gendered language that was removed. We also met with student advocacy groups at, at our high schools to get their input as well. And I think we landed on a policy that is much better than it was. But our schools are also aware of additional policy that they, and I use policy loosely there. A school can make a rule about additional requirements. One example of that that we noted that's actually in the dress code is the school can choose uniforms, which means they have a much different requirement than they do at other schools. Specific cases where a school has decided to add in a rule that we wouldn't endorse or support. But it's, you know, again, for them where they feel that that's a rule that, that they're willing to try to enforce so that they believe is important. But I, I think if you look at the updated dress code, hopefully you feel that it's much better than, than what we had in the past. And we're always open for input if you feel that there are additional changes that we need to make to that particular part of the policy.
Yeah, I think what we're also saying is that like, no, like, that is not something we're supporting.
Yeah, so I think the, the flexibility around this is a complex issue in a sincere way. And so I think navigating that requires for all of us to be thoughtful and, and not necessarily presumptive and, and really speak to the necessity of kind of how dress codes are differentiated. That being said, very consistently, the people who are reprimanded, folks who identify as femme or girls or women, or young women. And the other group that is targeted by dress codes are folks of color, right? So I've never seen a dress code that targets white guys. Never seen a dress code that's like, no khaki shorts, pillows. We're not gonna deal with that this year, right? So whose bodies are monitored, whose like relationship to their hair is monitored is, is specific and relates to power. And so I think what we can look at outside of the dress code is who's being reprimanded, being sent home. And if that is a specific demographic of people, that, that's discrimination. That's using those, those rules to discriminate against specific people. The other thing that I've heard from students is that a student leggings, a student with a different shaped body can't wear leggings, right? Like, so one student in a v-neck maybe isn't as full-figured, it's not a big deal. Another student in the exact same shirt from Old Navy is being told that their clothes are too revealing, right? And so when, when is it the dress code and when is it policing of, of young people's bodies? And honestly, like, it's hard enough to be a young person and to be developing, but then to have the adults around you, you know, kind of policing your clothes or policing the way your clothes fit can create an unnecessary strain in terms of learning or additional self-consciousness. And I think that's what we wanna avoid while being sensitive to, you know, people wanting kids to be prepared for the weather and, you know, the temperature of the, you know, the things that come from a place of, of care and consideration towards others, right? We don't want a kid to come in wearing like, you know, a swastika or something like that because it would be disruptive to the safety and learning for other kids. And that being said, there's a lot, there's a lot of nuance to navigate. But if we see that the majority of kids who get in trouble for what they're wearing are girls, if they're disproportionately girls of color or black girls, then I think we have to address that effectively. And so it would be helpful to have that information, right? Like, when we are talking about who gets in trouble for the dress code, even the new or revised dress code, or who gets in trouble using the additional elements. It would be, it would be helpful to have that in front of us so we can have a more informed conversation.
So...
Go ahead, Jay.
I just, we discussed this at length with the, as them, that they did quite a bit of surveying among their peers to sort of gather much of the information that you were just referring to. We have surprisingly little... Gotcha, okay. Relations that are documented, which makes it really hard for us to track. I believe that our policy is in a much better place than it was. And, and I think it would be hard for us to sort of go back to find something there that would allow some of the discrimination that you're referring to. So it starts with putting the, the right policy in place. The next one is to then figure out where are we, where are we creating inequity and enforcing it? And quite often, those are informal things where a teacher might mention something to a student. There's, there's nothing documented that makes the student feel sort of uncomfortable and maybe violated. But it's possible then that no one else in the school becomes aware of that. And so it comes from our conversations with students. And out of that sometimes come certain trends and patterns of a certain person that keeps recognizing certain things that aren't even in the dress code anymore.
So thank you, Jay, because that's exactly what I was going to go for. And my suggestion for, for, for this particular body of work and for the staff working with us is to actually figure out connection with young people, where you go to the school and meet with young people to hear, you know, the sort of unfiltered voices without a prescribed agenda and outcomes and, you know, set, you know, those things so you can hear unfiltered things that are actually happening in the building.
Absolutely.
So I have Nikki and Anika and Savia.
Additionally, what I was going to say is it could also be a poverty issue. I had a friend of mine's daughter, who's a single mom, grow five inches this summer. The dresses that they bought for school too much earlier are now almost miniskirts. Not that they were trying to, and she's wearing tights, but when it's 80 degrees, one can't always wear them and one can't always go and afford to buy clothes that will fit. And the last thing a student would need is to say, well, your dress is too short. Well, I can't afford to get another one.
Thank you, Nikki, and Anika.
I'm sorry, like, multiple things. Like, what does the staff like?
Anika, can you turn your... I'm so sorry, Anika.
I always forget. So like, what does the communication to the staff look like? Like, what you said about like informal things that staff say to students? That's happened to me in my experience and through like clubs I've been into. I've heard a lot of ex-member has told them to cover up or just put a sweater on or that their clothing is too low and they need to pull their shirt up. Just things like that that create a hostile environment to students. I feel like, I was just like wondering what you guys were doing to like communicate to the staff about like, that's not okay because those type of things don't really like get reported from the student end. And then another thing I was wondering about was like the communication or like the dress code in athletics. So at least at Memorial in Girls Cross Country, we're not allowed to take our shirts off on campus, even though the boys are. Which like, as a former runner, former runner was like really problematic in my experience, especially when it's like 90 degrees and you're going on a run. In addition to that, like, I know at Memorial at least, certain individuals have been told, telling like teams that their like swimsuits are too like revealing and that they need like a certain... like a certain type of swimsuit.
Wait, I'm sorry, the boys swim team or the girls swim team?
Ah, the girls swim team.
Like, because the boys swim team is wearing much less.
Yeah.
Right? So I'm like, that is the consistency.
Just like the general athletic dress code and like examining it to make sure that there aren't gender disparities. Misogynistic.
Thank you, Anika. Thanks, Savia.
Yeah, to Anika's point, I was going to ask, you know, are there any tools that we can use to gauge like the prevalence of informal warnings, which can also be seen as a, a microaggression and also like, you know, I'm not sure about the ways that the dress code may also criminalize students of color too. Like I remember I was tutoring and a student told me that, you know, a teacher said you can't wear that hat because it's associated with the gang or something like that. So also looking for places in that area to help with the informal or microaggressions that students may experience in school. Yeah, I think, Anika, you sort of referenced that so much of this is difficult because it, it happens, but it isn't something that necessarily gets reported or documented, which makes it really hard for us to sort of figure out where are there things, you know, where are these things occurring? Savia, on to your point, I think, you know, surveying students or meeting with students is probably our best way to continue to gather what is otherwise fairly anecdotal information. The other approach is just being, you know, way more purposeful with, you know, not just expecting staff to be aware of what the dress code says and that the dress code's been updated, or what in particular, you know, clarifying changes like that now hats and hoods are no longer included in the dress code. Minimally making sure that we're updated on what the policy says. But beyond that, understanding like the lines that we don't want our teachers to cross when they're believing that a student is wearing something that's maybe crossing a line that doesn't exist. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
I, I think to Chris's point early, like, earlier, like, I did not hear, I did not learn consent or like how our, like I wore uniform skirts and uniform and boys got to wear pants and who gets to wear what and how. And I think that part, like a lot of, a lot of what we're talking about is not trying to kind of play catch-up with, with, it's like, you know, there's got to be some educational component to our stats around like, this is, this is why we're no longer, you know, supporting or endorsing this. I, I hope as a learning institution that we're also thinking adults as learners and in particular in trying to make sure that we're, that we are experiencing what we are upholding and articulating. Gloria?
Just how, how often, Jay? I know we just reviewed it last year, but how often are you reviewing, particularly this policy? Because I think the trends change, right? I mean, things are changing every day it seems like, you know? And so I'm just wondering how often you review that policy and?
Uh, great question. I think the behavior education plan would be a part of our formal plan review. That would be, I believe, every five years now, but spring, Bren and I are sort of keeping track of some suggested edits that we've come across, you know, revising that. If there are any suggested edits to the dress code itself that you're coming across or that you're aware of, we would love for the policy committee to take those up and we can discuss them in the spring.
So that it'll come to the board in the spring?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much, everyone, for your work and for the great conversation.
Yes, thank you for your questions and your comments.
I don't think we have anything else.
Nope.
And it feels super early.
I know. It's pitch black outside.
Well, but it's early, six o'clock.
Walking out into midnight.
The end of the meeting, like an hour and 10 minutes. Entertaining a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Anika?
Aye.
Yeah? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, meeting adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.